Okay, please take your seats. Welcome to the four o'clock study session for the Newport Beach City Council, November 27, 2007. Roll call, please. The record will show, head up.
Record will show that all council members are present.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a couple of items for our study session today, but first we'll do clarification of items on the consent calendar. Start with Councilman Hen.
I have none.
Councilman Curry.
I have none.
Mayor Proton Solich.
None.
Councilman Webb.
None.
Councilwoman Daigle.
None.
Councilwoman Gardner.
None.
Woo-hoo. Okay, none. Move on to overview of building codes. We have a staff report on that.
We do. Jay Abitar is going to walk through the highlights of the changes in the building code, what it all means, and what it means to staff.
Can you toss in the meaning of life while you're doing it? No? Hello? There we go. Okay, mine's on.
No, it's on.
There you go.
All right, so, and we have the handouts available outside if anyone wants to pick up a copy of the slides that I'm going to go through.
Mr. Mayor, of course, we have the adoption on the regular agenda tonight of the codes that Mr. Abitar will be talking about.
As well as the fire codes.
As well as the fire code.
Okay.
I have a power presentation for you. Before I start, I just want to show you that these are the codes that we will be adopting in terms of the building code, the mechanical code, electrical code, and Mr. or Chief Bunting will cover the fire code later tonight. All the rest is reference standards that we need to use, too, and this is the model code that's published. And just so you get an idea, this was the 1931 electrical code of the city of Newport Beach. And it was 1931. Let's see, at that time, and now I saw it, I was checking it today. Well, I'm just trying to look at the mayor at that time that signed the adoption document for this code.
Well, now we know why they call it the good old days, all right?
Marcus Johnson, 15th day of June, 1931. That's the electrical code. And the electrical code is over there, about 600 pages now, this was about 30. And this was the 1927 Uniform Building Code. That's the base document we've been using for 75 years. And we grew to know and learn and love or hate, depending on which side you look at. This is the 1957 Plumbing Code of the city of Newport Beach. And that's how big it is. And the plumbing code is one of those blue ones there today. So as you can see, things get complex all the time. And we have to, not only staff, but the design community has to deal with that. So that's why the only thing constant in life is change, so. This is a significant change with these new codes, and I'll go through very quickly and explain why. The current codes used in California were based on the model codes, they usually are, and the model codes are published by code organization and developed by code officials and industry professionals, and normally they go every three years. The codes we have in place currently are nine years old. We missed many code cycles. The state of California chose to stay on the 1997 Uniform Building Code. So we are currently on outdated code. The reason being because the Uniform Building Code ceased to exist and is no longer published. The model code organizations, there were three in the nation, they joined hands and formed what's called the ICC, International Code Council, and published a different code. And California wasn't too sure about that code, so they decided to stay on the old codes and try to figure out what to do next. So we stayed on the old codes for about 10 years, the 1997 code. So the first time in 10 years, we will have a complete set of building codes based on the latest model codes and making most of the most current technology and methods of construction. Because every three years, we learn new things from events, earthquakes, hurricanes, tsunamis, and fire, life loss, and everything else, and we improve the codes. But when we stay on 10-year-old codes, we have not taken advantage of 10 years' experiences of events that happen. So we're really outdated today. The 2007 California Building Codes will be based on the 2006 International Building Code, a little bit more current, whereas what we have in place is what's called the 2001 California Building Code, and it's based on the 1997, again, Uniform Building Code. The effective date will be January 1, 2008, and is developed by the International Code Council, as I mentioned earlier. So we will no longer deal with the uniform codes that we've been used to using. I can't say I used it in 1922, I'm not that old, but the industry's been using for the last 75, or actually, 1997, 75, so it's 84 years. The new codes are known to be Title 24 California Code of Regulation. Part two is the building code. Part three is the electrical code. Part four is the mechanical code, and five is the plumbing code. Six is the energy code. And I think part seven is the fire code, or eight, maybe, nine. Part nine is the fire code. The local adoption process is regulated by Health and Safety Code, and basically, the California Building Standards Code is based on the latest additions of the model codes. So the state, in theory and by law, cannot stay on old additions of codes. They should always adopt the latest additions, but they, of course, they chose to stay on the 97 Building Code. And the adoption by local governments, cities, and jurisdictions must provide a more restrictive standard. We cannot make changes to the code that is less restrictive. We have to make changes that are more restrictive. And also, we have to justify these changes by making express findings. Our findings must be based on climatic, geological, or topographical conditions, and we must file those with the Building Standards Commission at the state level for our amendments to be effective. We cannot just make amendments because we want to.
Jay, I think what I just heard you say is, if we make any changes to the codes, they have to be more restrictive.
That's correct.
Doesn't, we're not mandated to make changes.
That's correct. Yeah, the changes we make must provide for a more restrictive standard, and we have to make findings also to justify those changes. The difference between this international code, or IBC, and the reason, really, the model code organization joined hands, and I'll cover that also shortly, is for economic competitiveness. Because we had three codes nationwide, so you have a manufacturer building an air conditioning unit in the south, based on a southern building code standards, and cannot market this air conditioning unit in California, for example. So the model code organizations decide to change hands and develop one national code called the International Building Code. And they figured if they don't do it, the feds will do it, so they had to do it, because they want a national standard, not regional standards. The IBC, the new code, utilizes reference standards, which is very significant. It also performance-based, and it's one volume, and that's this book right here. The UBC, on the other hand, utilizes prescriptive provisions, and what it does, it restates the standards in the code body by putting the language in there, with copyright issues, of course, with the standards publishers, and it references some standards, too, and it's three volumes. So what happened is, the UBC was a prescriptive requirement. If you have an issue, or a challenge, or a code issue, you would go straight to the book and you find your answer. The answer will be prescribed for you, the specification will be in the code, and they're derived from past histories and experiences and knowledge of events. And a group of experts, code officials, and industry professionals, through code hearings that we hold annually, we go through and we develop the code, and we make changes to the code. Example of a prescriptive requirement, for example, the maximum travel distance shall not exceed 150 feet. Exiting in a building, you go through a corridor, we tell you how, why the doors have to be, where the hardware has to be, how many stairs you have to have, the steps, and everything else, until you get out to a safe area, or we call discharge. So that's an example of prescriptive. However, for a performance approach, we will say, we just want you to get people out of the building within one minute, for example, or two minutes. We establish those criterias. And you work out the way to get them out of the building. Another example is, for example, is in terms of performance-based codes, what it does, it just basically states the general objective and the intent, and you have to figure it out. For example, here, how you park a car, you can park it by using rotor brakes, or drum system, or a boat anchor, or a parachute. As long as you can park, allow the car to brake within a certain prescribed distance, we don't care. That's the performance standards. Of course, you can open the door and stick your foot out, too, but that's not acceptable or safe manner. It has to be acceptable, any system that safely stops the car while allowing the driver to maintain control of the car. So that's the performance code, and that's very significant for the design professionals to understand and for code officials, because it allows flexibility into achieving the intent of designing a building. You can go many ways about it now. You can write a roadmap, and you go a certain way and get to point B from A, one way or the other way. Before, you had to go one way, so it's a little bit different. And now, because we have reference standards, these are the reference standards here, they're taken out of the body of the code. This is a list of the major standards that every engineer or architect must have if they're doing work. These standards cost the building department $1,306 a person, just to buy these standards. Very significant. And all the requirements now are in these standards. They're no longer readily available in the code. And this is a comparison between the old code and the new code. The inspection chapter used to be four pages, now it's 16. Because we're going to a more performance-based, we tightened the quality assurance and inspection. Now we have to do more quality assurance and more inspections, more testing, because we do not know what type of systems or materials being installed out there. They're not prescribed. They could be different products or materials. The concrete chapter used to be 88, now it's only 11, because now you have to go to the standards. The aluminum used to be 18, now it's one page. The steel used to be 35, now it's three pages, and the wood dropped by 30 pages. So you can see, now you no longer pick up a book and go through it, now you have to go and look at all these standards to get your answers. What are some of the major changes? The structural provisions now became national, because we used to develop the code in the western region, so now our structural provisions in the code are based on what a document called ASE7, 2005, and the way the load and the seismic loads calculation has changed. The non-structural side, again, it increases the design flexibility, and it allows you to use the sprinkler system and give you incentives to use the sprinkler system and give you huge benefit. It will reduce their code requirements greatly and enhance, as long as you meet the intent of safety in the building. What is unique about the new codes? Do they have more stringent seismic requirements compared to the old codes? The new building codes are based on the National Earthquake Hazard Reduction Program, NHER provisions, and that program is funded by FEMA, and they basically mapped what we call the ground acceleration nationally for every part of the country. And now, you would, basically, when you're designing a building, you would have to determine the ground acceleration for that building succinctly and specifically. You no longer go in and say, we're in seismic zone four, we're in California. Now you look at the seismic design category of a building, a given building, and all the code requirements are driven after you determine the seismic design category of that building. So it makes things more complex in design and plan review, too, because you have to go, based on the zip code and the latitude and longitudinal coordinates of the building, or the address, you would have to go to a website or the maps and determine the ground motion for that specific site. So you could have a site here like City Hall that will have ground motions different than a site half a mile away, and the requirements for this building could be completely different than a building half a mile away. Before, it used to be more uniform, because there were regional ground acceleration for the whole area. And then the side soil conditions will figure, too. So if this, we're in poor soil versus bedrock, or then you would have to figure that, too. And then also, the type of the building. For example, a hospital will be more critical, police station than a city hall. Of course, city hall's more important than anything else, but. So that complicates things. It's no longer a straightforward approach. How do the new codes affect buildings that are already under construction? When, if a building that is in plan check, or it's already permitted, then it stays under the old code. But if a building, once the codes become effective, then a project that's submitted for a plan check after January will have to fall under the new code. Additions or alterations will only, the portion will have to comply in general, though, because sometimes there might be an impact on the existing building, but the additions or alterations have to comply with the new codes. Non-conforming conditions are a big challenge for us, and I know Sharon Wood attended one of the seminars, and I raised that question. Non-conforming conditions are a challenge, because these codes are perceived to be less restrictive. So if you have a building that is built under the old codes, and you have improvements or additions to it, the additions or alterations have to meet the new code, but it may be less restrictive. So we have to evaluate the building as a whole to determine what is the impact that the addition or the alteration will do to this building? Would it make it in whole less restrictive? Would it make it status quo condition, or would it make it more restrictive? It's not a straightforward approach anymore, because it's totally different codes, totally different approach, and totally different philosophy. Companies that do work in construction outside the state, for example, let's say you have a Home Depot, or a Ross store, or a chain, a grocery store chain, an architect now in New York can pick up the International Building Code and design. Before, if they were different codes, it was a challenge. So this is a significant achievement, to go on one national code. Products can be manufactured and sold nationally. They comply with one set of codes, they don't have to comply with three codes. And historically, we led the way, but of course, we fell behind, because we did not adopt the most recent codes, and we stayed on the 1997 Building Code. So now we'll catch up, back again, as a state of California. Now I'll go over the significant changes in the code, and then I'll follow up with what we are doing in Newport Beach as an amendment to the code. The building code, the occupancy classification has changed, and they're no longer depending on the number of people. They used to depend on the number of people. Now they depend on the use. For example, we used to have E1, E2, and E3 for educational occupancy, and of course, you can relate the letter to the occupancy type E for E1, for educational. And E1, E2, and E3 were dependent on the age of the children or adults and the number, and we used to classify them on those classifications and apply code requirements accordingly. So requirements for E3 may be different than E1, because, again, it could be E3, they could have children of younger age and larger number of them, then we want to make sure we apply more restrictive requirements for safety. Now the new classification will be E, no more E1, E2, E3. That's, again, a challenge for us, because if you pull a building record and all permit that says E3, and now you're looking and the new occupancy is E, you have to relate. It's not a straightforward comparison. The residential occupancies. R1 used to be apartments and hotels. Now there is R1 and R2, depending on the amount of stay, whether it's transient or non-transient, and the cutoff is 30 days. So now apartments are R2. So R1 used to be apartments, they're now R2. So that's a change. And then this is just significant changes that I'm trying to highlight here. The heights and areas. The new code is much more generous in the type of, the size of the area for a given building, but with a lot of modifiers, too, that allow you to increase the area. It's sometimes not even doubled or tripled, 10 or 20 folds now. And building heights have changed, and also can be increased with modifiers. There are certain conditions where you can modify the maximum allowable height of a building. This is building code, not zoning code, then you can increase the building. The state fire marshal made many changes to the building code to limit the increases to the, the state fire marshal regulates occupancies by statute. The state fire marshal regulates certain occupancies, and they made amendments to eliminate many increases and changes that they felt were too liberal, and they wanted to be more restrictive, consistent with the old code that we have in place. The type of construction designation has changed. This is a simple change, but just to show you how logistically it would be a problem. Used to be type 1, Latin numeral letter, fire-resistant, now it's 1A. Type 3N, now it's type 3B, AB, AB always, instead of 1-hour, non-rated, 1-hour, non-rated, and so forth. So again, for us, we have to adjust. We have to adjust our forms, our permit documents, our permit system that used to print type 5, non-rated, for residential construction, now it has to be 5B. So we have to get used to that new designation. What it takes to calculate an area for a building, for example, a three-story building, it used to be a process that takes two steps, now it's a formula with many terms, and you have to go through calculations. Very much complex, and the state fire marshal changes make it even a little bit different for state fire marshal occupancies. These are not state fire marshal occupancies, business and mercantile. So again, you have to go through number crunching, and architects have to do that, if they want to know how big a building can be, and we have to, of course, verify if that's within the allowable limits. The separation of occupancies and uses. We separate hazardous uses from other uses. For example, if you have a boiler room that has a boiler, that's a hazardous type of use, we separate it from the dining area, or a restaurant, and vice versa. So now the code has three ways. It used to be one way, and it's all prescribed for you in the code. If it's black, it's white. Now you have three ways to go by separating occupancies. And building designers can choose which way they want to go, but they must indicate on the plans which way they're going, so we can check it accordingly. Otherwise, we'll be miscommunicating and going by applying different code requirements, not knowing what they're intending to do to achieve the intent of the code. There is significant reduction in fire resistant of building elements. The method of determining exterior wall rating and openings have changed, and this is very significant for us, for narrow lots. Because what happened is, previously in the code, walls used to have to be 1-hour rated when they're three foot or less from the property line. The new code pushed that back two feet. Now it has to be, five feet is the distance where a wall has to be rated. So if you have a house on the peninsula, and the wall is three foot away from the property line, you're doing an addition. Now the addition portion will be three feet away, you have to rate that 1 hour, whereas in the past, it doesn't have to be rated. The openings, also, now the code allow a mix. They push the wall back five feet, but they allow you a certain percentage of openings, a certain percentage of protected and unprotected. So you have to identify on the plans, within the code limits, which windows have to be fire-rated, which windows doesn't have to be fire-rated, along the same wall. So if you're building a house, and you decide that you don't, the owner decides he doesn't like this window, and want to relocate it on the other wall around the corner, you can't do that, because you mess up the percentages. So now that means, again, in plan review, we have to identify those windows, and the inspector has to also go out and make sure that 10% of the windows protected, 15% unprotected, stays the same. If there is a trade-off, it has to be equal trade-off. It cannot be just, you know, taking away and increasing the number of unprotected windows. Very significant change. All building firewall and fire separations terminology have changed. The ratings are generally reduced. Many options now available to use these building elements, depending on the designer's choice. There are significant changes to the fire sprinkler system requirements. Buildings now, in the new code, are divided into fire areas, and architects can use that and take that to their advantage, into dividing the building into fire areas to avoid complying with sprinkler system. But in Newport Beach, we have a threshold of 5,000 square feet. So our threshold will take over, and those fire areas for these buildings are always larger than 5,000 square feet. So they cannot take advantage of this fire areas in Newport Beach. However, residential occupancies.
Jay, just a second.
I'm sorry.
That's just general. Why, what was the thinking behind that? You know? I mean, why would they do something that seems less safe?
The, I'm sorry, your question was, why the codes, or why Newport Beach threshold?
Oh, no, I agree with that threshold, just why they would loosen this, and then the IBC would, or ICC, whatever it's called.
IBC.
Restrict that.
Well, the IBC actually did not, did not make it less safe. By dividing the building into fire areas, these fire areas are divided with fire-rated walls and fire-rated ceilings, they're protected pockets, so it did not really make it less safe. It's just a different way of achieving the level of safety. In residential occupancies, except single-family dwelling for apartments and hotels, the requirement now with the new code will take over, because the new code requires them to be sprinkled regardless of the size. Before, it used to be 5,000 square foot threshold, now it's no longer the case, because these are state codes, they're more restrictive. So if somebody wants to build a small motel or a triplex that's 4,500, below the Newport Beach threshold, they still have to sprinkle, based on the new codes. So it's a new requirement. There are many benefits and rewards now to the installation of sprinkler systems throughout the code. It allows you to build larger, higher, bigger, and with lesser of passive safety components, because you're installing sprinkler system. Other changes, changes to the exit requirement, now you no longer have to, several design options to minimize the use of corridors, because again, you're using sprinkler system. There's a significant change now that will affect our community in the model code, or the state code now, that you need only one stair for single-family dwelling, regardless of how high and how big the house is. It used to be three stories or more, you have to provide two stairways, or when it's larger than 3,000 square foot, the second floor. Now you can build up to four or five stories, single-family dwelling with one stairway. And that's a very popular change with architects here, especially on narrow lots. If you have a 30-foot wide lot, and you need to provide two stairways, that really kills the whole floor plan. But with one stairway, I'm sure everybody is, will be thrilled with that. We at the building department have been allowing the installation of decks exceeding a certain square footage with one stairway, provided they sprinkled the building. We were using that as an alternative approach, but we don't need to anymore because of this. This is another change that will impact our community, too. The size of stair risers and treads are now a maximum of 7 and 3/4, and a minimum of 10 inches. It used to be 8 inches and 9 inches. This will make the stairways longer, a lot longer, and you need more room. So again, in the peninsula, or in Baboa Island, you may not be able to fit a stairway as it used to before. So you need to pay attention to that.
Is the tread width still, you got, the height is?
36 inches, the tread width, the stairway.
Okay, but then, as far as the depth, then?
The depth is 10 inches, minimum. It used to be 9 inches.
Jay, how would it work with non-conforming and how that's administered? Like, I would think, maybe, a lot of stairways now in Newport Beach are now non-conforming, just because of the code change. And how does that work in terms of how you administer non-conforming?
Well, that's, again, the biggest challenge that I think we'll be facing, not only with the stair, for example, the next slide is the guardrails. The guardrails now have to be 42 inches, there is no longer 36 inches allowed. So if somebody's doing a balcony repair, taking out the old guardrail, in theory, with the new code, they have to... the new code, they have to replace it with a 42 inch. But if they're doing only a portion of the balcony, this portion is 36 inches, they're repairing this portion, does it make it any safer to make this portion 42 and the old portion remain 36? Does a child know where to go to fall through? I mean, you know, so it really, we have to look at that holistically and work with the existing non-conforming conditions. If it's a safety issue, then we probably will lean to the side of the cautious side. A stairway is a good issue. We've had many old homes where you do a stairway repair, whether it's an exterior stairway termite damage. If you do it per the new code, it won't fit anymore because it's a longer stairway. So we have to grandfather it. We have to, we have to work with it.
And another question too, I can see how with performance-based standards that it gives more flexibility to applicants, but on the other side, it would seem to give more discretion to the city. And I'm kind of curious how your approach to administering it in terms of, of what is the level of information that we're going to be requiring from applicants? I mean, do they, do they have to demonstrate that the way that they're going to meet that standard is acceptable to the department or how does that play out?
Well, that's a very good question. We are thinking of going back and update our handouts and supplemental requirements to make sure that we have all the information laid out beforehand. Also, we encourage all design professionals to hold preliminary reviews with us and agree on the approach beforehand, before they start with the design development because the approach may not be workable, we may not agree to it. So we will have to conduct a lot more preliminary reviews. I also expect that will place a high demand on our staff. We need higher technical knowledge and level of judgment because now you have to deal with, with options and design issues that are no longer readily available for you in the code that are black and white. You have to really look at the intent and look at the objective and look at design solutions. We can also, as we've done in certain cases, use outside consultants and peer reviews.
Okay. I appreciate your proactive approach and the handout so at the outset, applicants know what's expected of them so that, you know, they don't put a lot of money in this and so on and way down the road, all of a sudden, you know, they're saying, why am I being subject to this or that? So that would make sense.
Yeah, and I think the preliminary reviews will be crucial and we have to agree on the approach beforehand. It's very, very important.
If there are two or three different approaches, does the architect get to choose the approach or is the building department going to choose their approach?
It's a design choice, as long as it meets the intent. If you achieve the goal of the code compliance, it's a design choice.
Okay, so the architect and the people building the building get to make that choice and, and your staff then will just make sure that they meet the requirements of that choice?
Right, but we have to know what road they took to follow it. Because if we don't know it, we may apply a different requirement.
Jay, it sounds like it really complicates things if, if the design team does not in advance take, take advantage of a meeting with staff in order to plot out what road they're going to take because then the plan check is submitted and the plan checker is trying to figure that out. And it seems like it may require a lot of going back and forth once the plan check is, is submitted in order to try and find out how this is being proposed.
Right, you are correct, Mr. Gudao. I mean, it's a, it's a very crucial to lay out all the information in advance, agree on the approach. I've looked at other states and looked at some of their plans and how they do it and they lay out everything. All the information is at the beginning, the title pages, they tell you if we're going to use separated occupancies, non-separated, they're going to use sprinkler system. And what are the advantages that they're taking by using the sprinkler system? What trade-offs they're doing? They'll spell all that out for you. So when you go in, you know readily what, what path they're taking to achieve compliance.
So are we going to mandate that somehow in the process?
Well, I'm thinking that we may require them to first through the preliminary reviews to agree on something. If we know somehow how they are designing the building and what path they're following, whether we know it off the bat or if they can show it on the plans, then obviously beneficial for everyone involved, including the design professionals. So I think we might go that route. We're still not sure.
Would it be helpful to have a, some kind of workshop with the local architects to get their ideas too and get this process rolling a bit perhaps?
Yes, Councilmember Gardner, we're actually thinking of holding workshop to contractors and architects and we've invited and sent notices to everyone, hoping that we can, this will be a start for them to heighten their awareness and get them to know what's coming.
Hasn't the, the local professional organization also invited the design community to some of the training programs you've had?
Yes, we've had, we've actually had trainings through the California Building Officials, through many, we have many trainings. We have one December 18th in the Newport Marriott by Fashion Island. And we have one training sponsored by BIA for residential construction only in the city of Irvine, November 7th. So I, I mean, December 7th. So I encourage everyone who's interested to try to, we've been doing training since April, a lot of training, yeah. Our building code, significant amendments, there, there are not really many, we were just trying to carry the status quo. What we did is we carried the special fire protection zone, construction standards and the sprinkler requirement, we carried them over from the current code and correlated them not only with the fire code, but also we fit them in the new format of the, this new building code because it's no longer the same section, no longer the same occupancies, no longer the same terminology. So we put them in there to achieve the same intent. We did not increase the intent with this amendment. The roofing classification, we did the same thing. We did not change the requirements, we carried over the same amendments. We did add some, several structural amendments following the recommendation by the tri-chapters of Los Angeles, Orange, Ventura County and Orange County and basically because these are national standards, they do not include several unique seismic provisions to our high seismic region. So we did some amendments and some were actually in fact editorial, there were some typos we found. So we made those amendments. The pool barrier requirement, we carried it over from the current Newport Beach code to achieve the same level of protection for pools constructed throughout the community. For the electrical code, there is one significant change, there are other changes, but this change we feel is significant worth mentioning is that the GF CI protection now is required for other occupancies other than houses. You used to have GF CI or GFI, commonly known, it's a ground fault circuit interrupter. It's an outlet that you install and in the bathroom, for example, when you have a short, it will trip and cut the current. So it will help the hair dryer gets wet or somebody from getting electrocuted. So now it's required to be installed in commercial kitchens, commercial bathrooms, rooftops and everywhere else, not limited to single-family. Newport Beach amendment, basically we adopted Article 89, which tells us which work requires a permit because administrative code that we have is a building administrative code that does not include the electrical requirement that tells us when an electrical permit is required. And we also adopted appendix or proposed to adopt Annex A in this case, which includes product standards. Anexes and appendices are up to us to adopt locally. The state has nothing to do with it. And they're normally guidelines, design documents and guide documents and helpful tools to administer the code or use the code. We also recommend adopting Annex B, which includes information for capacity calculations for panels. And Annex C, which has the tables necessary to determine the conduit sizes. The mechanical code, there are major changes in the mechanical code. They changed the way it looks and feels. There are changes to the exhaust system for kitchen ventilation, for flue venting. There are minor changes for fuel gas connectors, combustion air equipment, and minor changes in ducts, boilers and so forth. We only have one amendment, which is adopting Appendix A relating to standards for installation of factory-made air ducts. We don't have any other amendments to the mechanical code proposed locally. The plumbing code, there are major changes, again, in the water heaters, fuel gas piping and changes for metigas and vacuum system for healthcare. There is moderate changes in fixtures that relates to the fixture counts in terms of how many water closets and urinals and lavatories installed in the building. There are minor changes in sanitary drainage and direct waste and vents. And there's a new chapter relating to gray water systems. That's a new chapter added in the plumbing code. Our amendment, yes?
Yeah, is that something that particularly restaurants are going to be required to have the grease traps that we now have recommended in our various different codes or, or does that go away?
It doesn't go away or require more. It's more changes to the specification and installation. It is not a requirement, it's not a trigger that restricts the installation of the interceptor or the trap.
Okay, so we will still be able to get the same level or better future construction?
Yes.
Okay.
We recommend adopting Appendix A, which is again, rules for sizing pipes and all these appendices, firefighter breathing air replenishment systems, gray water system, it's a new appendix again. Also, we replaced Table 6-4 with an amended table. This is a new table in the code to carry over the requirement to allow us to use plastic piping in Newport Beach. We, we would like to continue, we have always allowed it in Newport Beach, to use plastic piping because we have hot soil conditions. If we force the use of copper piping, they will corrode and we'll have leaks between the main and the building underground unless it's sleeved and protected. So we carried the same requirement, but now they moved it somewhere else, so we had to work with it and replace that table. We've also amended this table to comply with the requirement for polyethylene pipes used below ground condition. Now I'll go over some of the impacts that I perceive in terms of what we will do operationally. For new construction, the new codes again, as I mentioned, allow several design options. The design approach must be established beforehand and must be shown on the project documents early on in the process. We must agree on it. If we could, it would be wonderful through preliminary plan review. If the precedence is set and it's a tried and proven path, then you can show it on the plans and move forward and we will go with it so we can apply the appropriate planner view approach. More information will be required on the plans. If you're using performance standards, you have to provide more information. Alternative design options or materials will have to be evaluated before or in the early stage, again, through the preliminary plan review. If you're doing something different or you want to introduce a new approach. And in this case, we have to have the technical knowledge and judgment to, versus the before black and white approach of opening the code, it's in the code. Now you may not find it in the code.
What do you mean, you will have to have the technical knowledge? Is this going to be something the architect will give you a brochure saying that a design professional has shown that this performance, this performance approach has worked in the past and therefore we can use it? Or is this technical knowledge going to be something that your plan checkers are going to have to, to know and agree upon with the architects?
That's a very good point. What I meant here is for the plan checkers to have the technical knowledge, but it really applies to the design professional as well. The design professional must provide all the supporting documents and data that supports the use of their product or method of design. And we have to be able to evaluate that to make sure it meets the intent of the code and agree with it or not. So it's a lot more...
But with performance evaluations, there isn't, you already described, there isn't a black and white. So are we going to end up having problems with an architect saying that, that this performance approach that he's using works and your plan checker saying, no, I don't think it does work? How do, how do we resolve those types of differences?
We will resolve it just as we do every day. The building official has to come in and arbitrate.
Jay, are you saying that with the submittal of plans then, for plan check, that there's going to be, need to be a lot of studies or specifications for specific products maybe? That's, that's going to be a part of the plan check, you know, paperwork now?
That's correct. If, if you're submitting a new product or a new, I mean, if you're doing the run of the mill, single-family dwelling all the time, then it's okay. But if you are doing commercial building or unique product or system that you try to use or take advantage of a certain way in the code, then you have to show us how you're doing it. Yeah, it's very challenging. For additions and alterations, I think Councilmember Deagle raised that issue. We have to identify those beforehand and we have to look at the building in whole when we cover that. We cannot just apply the new codes based on, for an alteration. Somebody could come in and say, I want to do a tenant improvement for this office building and the new code does not require corridors, therefore I'm going to take the corridors away for the whole building. Or you can say, timeout. You can't do that because the building is built under the old codes. We have to look at the whole building. We cannot just quickly eliminate the corridors or stairwells. Impact on inspections, again, going back to the materials and standards, the building inspectors cannot carry all these specific reference standards with them and even if they do, they're not going to have the time to thumb through. So the information has to be on the plans, which means during the plan review, we will require more information and all design professionals have to provide them more on the plans. They're going to have to be specific. Now you have to show those, which windows are protected, which windows are unprotected? Which walls serve as a fire barrier, which walls doesn't serve as a fire barrier? And, you know, again, the use of sprinkler system and everything else, it has to be shown. And maybe even if we don't require it, maybe it behoove a project designer or an architect, we normally architects do that anyway, they will have to size the stair and count the number of risers and treads. Otherwise, it doesn't pay to say risers and treads, minimum this and this because it may not fit. And by the time you order the stair and order the prefabricated fancy handrail system, it will not work. So my advice is to size your stairs, figure every tread and riser. In terms of acceptance, acceptance will require a higher level of judgment, again, for the inspectors because they have all these new products, they have, they don't have the standards. The inspection duration will increase, I'm anticipating, because they have to verify the code requirements, they have to look at every window to make sure this is within the percentage, it's etched marked, it's rated, this is not rated. And in the same wall, one window could be rated, one window would be not rated. Before it would be easy call, all rated, all non-rated. Now you have to have some rated, some non-rated, for example. And this is just an overview of that. So again, I, I feel that it will make things, granted, the codes are more flexible in closing and they give the design professional more flexibility. For us, code officials will make things a little bit more difficult, require a higher level of knowledge and resources. I have discussed this with Sharon Wood and Homer Gudao and we'll be coming back and presenting council some possibilities of adjusting resources to be able to handle what we feel is, is a challenge, to maintain the same service level. With that, that concludes my presentation and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Councilmember Gardner?
You touched on it right now, but how do you feel just as far as the adequacy of staff, both in terms of numbers and in terms of training and expertise, looking at this daunting changeover?
Well, the, in terms of number, our plan review staff are not sufficient, but because of the city hall space, we rely on outside consultants. We do not have space to hire more plan review engineers, we just simply don't. But in terms of expertise, I think we need to up the level a notch and require a little bit more knowledge and judgment to be able to empower staff to make those decisions that will enable them to approve a design methodology, to make them be able to analyze and evaluate situations and approve them as part of their over, you know, plan review process, not having to go to another administrative level. Because otherwise, I will not be able to do anything myself or Faisal Jodi, chief engineer, because we will be able, just doing that all day. So we need a higher level of expertise and training and knowledge that has to be gained. You got to remember, these codes, like I said, some of us, first of all, these codes are not taught in school. There's no curriculum, engineers or architects that go to school and learn codes. So you learn them by experience. And for us, it's, we have to learn many of these things back from scratch. It's totally new codes. We've grown to, to know the UBC. We've grown to know the UBC from, for me, since the beginning of my career. And now I have new codes. So they waited 10 years.
That leads to another question. We've been working very hard, your department has and other departments to streamline our whole process because there were complaints that we weren't getting things through. How is this, do you think, going to affect the timing of someone who's bringing project in?
Well, that's a very good question. It's incumbent on us to maintain the same service level or better. And I think at this point in time, the time of response will suffer because not only the design professionals are not well versed with the codes themselves, but we are not still. We're trying to, again, learn this as we go. It's a challenge. But I would think that the time, response time will suffer.
Anyone else? Councilman Curry?
Jay, is Steve going to talk about the fire code or is that part of this presentation or not? If not, let's ask a question.
It wasn't going to be part of the presentation, unless there are any questions and then we'll bring him up.
Well, the question is, you know, in sort of light of the fires that we've had recently in Malibu and in Santiago Canyon, are you confident that we have state of the art fire codes now, particularly for the areas of the city and Newport Coast and adjacent to Bug Gully, that would mitigate against the kind of damage that we saw in Malibu or at least provide us with the state of the art kind of building standards to best defend against that kind of fire catastrophe?
The, these areas you described are generally classified currently as the fire protection zone in the city. And because of the fires, actually, the fire marshal is working on new requirements going into effect July of this year. So we yet again will have new requirements. And it was supposed to go into effect, I believe, of January 2009, but it got pushed forward now. So the task is to implement more, yet more restrictive standards than what we have in place. But I believe in our community, we had standards in place that was ahead of the game and were in the fire and building code already. So come July, we may have to tweak it a little bit and try to match again whatever the state introduces more restrictive, we have to go to it, of course. But if it's less restrictive, we'll stay with ours and make the findings of, again, the fire hazard in the Bug Gully and Newport Coast, which is a high fire hazard zone. I put my fire marshal hat on.
Couple of things. On the fire related issue, when are we going to outlaw shingles and shake roofs?
Well, we outlawed shingles and shakes roof for a while. And then we require now Class A roof assembly all throughout, new construction throughout the city proper. And we have more restrictive standards in the fire, higher, high fire hazard zone or fire protection zone. But recently, we've found a new product out there that are, is made of a company, I don't want to mention the name, I don't want to do advertising here, but it's a Class A roof shakes that does meet the requirement. And we've been allowing that on case by case basis, so.
Doesn't that, I mean, that's, that's fine for the first two or three years, don't you have to have some sort of treatments to keep up the fire resistance? Because those treatments tend to evaporate and, but that's, I don't want to get into that particular area. I think that the code really, I think that it's wonderful for us to have performance standards. Because I think that many times, we have been restricted by a black and white building code that specified exactly how you did it. But the performance standards gives a little bit, to me at least, gives an architect the ability to look at the product he needs to have and come up with a way of achieving that. But that will only work if our building staff can also learn and, like you said, be empowered to work with the architects in evaluating these performance standards. So what kind of training are you giving? I assume you're giving it right now, since this takes place in January. What kind of training are you giving your staff to allow them to be able to be more flexible and be empowered to evaluate these performance standards when they come in?
The training side, we've been, we send staff to the model code training, the ICC organization, we've had the training specifically located in Newport Beach in April. We've sent, staff is continually going to training by also the California Building Association, who I'm on the board for that association. And we are conducting individual training in every staff meeting and every week also. Staff meetings are bi-weekly. So we're going through and hammering it out and going through the codes. So I believe that's the training that would, in itself, will not bring the staff to the level that I think they should be or you described. It takes years to learn the code. We in the business say that it takes two years for a new individual to engineer architect that we hire to learn how to plan review, because this is an acquired skill, it's not taught in school. So for us to get a level of empowerment where somebody can make a judgment call and evaluate an option and meet the intent, they have to understand the code intent. They have to learn through the code development process, how the provisions got in the code. It's really a high level of expertise that I don't think staff at the current level have. I think we need to look at our staffing and possibly reclassify or come up with a higher level, because we will not be able to attract that talent or knowledge base that we have out there that our staff currently have.
And every other city is going to be in the same situation?
Yes, yes. It's very challenging, the whole, there's a lot of retirements out there right now. Yeah, a lot of people are retiring, they don't want to deal with this.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Jay, for that very thorough. Yeah, we're going to open up for public comments. Anybody want to make a public comment on the adoption of the new codes? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close that. Thank you again, Jay. And we'll be addressing that issue tonight at council where we will be adopting the new codes, as well as the new fire codes. All right, our next agenda item is an underground utility assessment district income tax component of contribution exclusion discussion. I believe this is a follow-up to discussions we've had in the past with regard to the ITCC component of.
It is. Iris Lee did the staff report for the study session, she will do the presentation. I just want to point out Steve Badham is not here and will not be here tonight because of medical reasons.
Medical testing reasons.
Good evening, council. Are you ready? Can you hear me? Today, we're here to revisit the ITCC issue, ITCC meaning the income tax component contribution, and whether to exclude it in our future assessment districts, which accounts up to about 35% of construction value. To recap, what ITCC is, is basically a potential tax liability owed by the utility companies if the construction work is deemed taxable because the work is deeded over to the utility companies. Again, this amounts to about approximately 35% of construction value and that's what we've seen for the previous assessment districts that have been prepared with engineers' report. Basically, an argument in favor of excluding the ITCC includes a lower overall assessment amount. We do see a big sticker shock value, that's about, like about 20% of the assessment. And typically, assessment, I'm sorry, property owners do see that as a big liability, I mean, I'm sorry, a big amount to pay. Eliminates the need to process a second loan, or second bond rather, for ITCC component if it does get levied by IRS. And eliminates the need to release these liens and pay back all the property owners if they don't collect it. And number three eliminates the need to explain to property owners because it is about ITCC because it is a rather confusing item. And arguments against excluding ITCC basically is where the city assumes the risk of paying that amount should IRS decide to levy this tax. Basically, it boils down to what the risk is and how big of a risk is the city assuming. We have done an analysis and it has been shown that we're not aware of any assessment districts of this kind being taxed in California before. Because of this additional work that's being done to process all these bonds and liens and whatnot, cities in California such as Ventura, Piedmont, Laguna Beach, Manhattan Beach, Hermosa, have all just taken ITCC out of their engineers' report and not even included. And basically, a legal analysis was prepared by the attorney's office, saying that there is a strong argument that ITCC will not be levied for this kind of assessment district projects. So just to make it short, there is argument to exclude it and it's up to council to decide whether we want to take it out of future assessment districts.
Thank you, Iris. Councilman Curry, you have a question?
Thank you. I think we ought to exclude it, but why don't we simply ask the IRS for a private letter ruling to remove all this doubt?
That's an option. I don't believe there's time to do that in between the next assessment district, which is planned to, to come forward and us getting that, that type of opinion. Also seeking the opinions, there's some risk involved in that because you could always get a determination that's unfavorable and it kind of shines a light on, on the topic.
Have any of these other communities thought to ask for that in the past?
I'm unaware of any communities that have. But, but there is, there is an IRS notice that came out, which basically supports the theory that this would be, this is not a payment for service and it's for the public benefit. It's not directly on point, but it's pretty close.
Councilman Hen?
And presumably, then, there's no way to get an opinion of council, of private council, tax council on this subject at this point. We have counsel here and you may want to address that question, Jim.
Good evening, I'm Bob Hessel. The, the private letter ruling, I'll just back up just for a second. A number of cities have obtained those in the past. They're usually for large assessment districts where it's cost effective. I think that the cost is typically at least $50,000. One of the problems we have in Newport Beach is the construction costs are such a problem and constantly rising. And the length of time it often takes to get a letter precludes us from doing so, because we'll get the costs in and then if we apply for the letter, by the time we get the letter, those costs are no longer valid and we have to start the whole process over again. It almost doesn't fit any time schedule.
But, but other communities with a comparable set of facts and circumstances relating to the creation of districts have obtained a letter.
Yes, yes. There have been several in California and they have all said that they are not taxable events.
Is it possible to get just a blank letter saying that this type of, you know, underground and utility is, or assessment districts are not a taxable event for?
From the IRS?
Yeah.
It would have to be in the form of either another tax note or a general counsel opinion or something like that. I really believe that it's, this is something that's under the radar for them. There are, every state's assessment laws are different and they all work differently. So you can't, the IRS couldn't put out one letter good for everybody.
No, I'm just saying good for Newport Beach.
No, they're case by case basis.
So each assessment district has to have its own?
A private letter ruling is only good for the issue you're asking.
And how long does it take to get that letter typically?
They used to take up to a year and a half. My understanding is that they're speeding that process up a bit.
Only a year and a quarter?
But having said that, there's very little reason to believe that this is a taxable event.
Why is there such a large cost associated with obtaining a letter?
I don't know. I don't know if the IRS fees are that or it's just that that's traditionally the attorneys who write the letters, but that's the cost I'm always quoted when I ask people about it.
So, okay, so it's, in other words, you're having, like some kind of a tax council prepare the documentation and the argument and that's the $50,000 component?
Yes, yes. Now, I'm not so, oftentimes, it is risky to ask the IRS the question because you're never quite sure what the answer is going to be as your counsel has said. Although I think in this area, it's not necessarily the case. I think that any standard underground and utility assessment district would probably get an okay letter. But it's, it's not, it's something you can do, it's not the preferred method. If you, on one of these districts coming along that's much larger, it might be something you'd want to consider.
Okay. Councilman Hen?
So recognizing that you're not expressing an opinion of counsel here, would you classify the risk of this decision as relatively low in all probability?
I've always believed it is relatively low. I've never seen anything that would change my opinion on that regard. Unfortunately, all I can do is offer you my opinion.
Right. And have, are you aware of any circumstance in which this decision has gone the wrong way with the IRS?
Not in this type of assessment district. I think there was a district that the IRS claimed taxable just the other day, there was a private, letter ruling was published, but the tax are entirely different, facts, I'm sorry, not tax, and had nothing to do with underground assessment districts.
And how long a period of time has this been at issue?
The notice, the first notice that they came out and basically said this type of a district should be okay was in 1987.
So it's a long time then?
Right.
And you're not aware of any problems?
No.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Hessel. Anybody have any questions on ours? Okay, thank you.
You know, I guess I'm just a little surprised that through legislation, the whole matter hasn't been clarified either at the federal or state level. It seems like maybe there could be legislation where you have different categories to where you describe. You know, the, what is a benefit, public benefit and what isn't, and it could be handled that way.
Yeah, we did some pretty extensive research on this and the code itself does not define what constitutes a contribution to capital of the taxpayer. Like I said before, though, the case law that it's interpreted that, which basically came up with what was eventually legislated, you know, takes a look at whether or not it's a payment for service or not and whether it's for a public benefit. If you have those two components, then the courts, which have interpreted the provisions, have come down on the side of basically holding it as being a non-taxable event. And the IRS notice, which I referred to earlier from the 87, supports that position. So I agree with outside counsel that there's relatively low risk based on the work that we did. And I thought you were looking for more of a general notice opinion that's out of all facts rather than a project specific, and I gave that previous advice.
Assuming that, okay, we didn't add the ITCC tax in and the IRS, for whatever reason, later on decides that it is a taxable event, what, is there any recourse of the city to go back to the assessed property owners to recoup the money or the city's just, I mean, who's ultimately going to be responsible for it and can the city somehow protect itself?
Yeah, there's a lot of different ways to structure, structure the, this issue. If the city basically didn't take any action and just said it was exempt, then the city would be on the hook for, for those fees. Other ways are to basically divide out the components and let the people pay, you know, one for the assessment, not pay the tax, and then that becomes either a lien on the property or, or they could pay it and we hold it for eight years and refund the money to them. There's a lot of different ways to structure it if you're looking for some way to protect the city, but typically that would be a general decision not to.
They're paying it now though, right?
That's correct.
And we're holding it and giving it back after eight years?
My understanding is that the last few assessment districts haven't gone through though, because of such a large component increases the cost to such a significant level.
No, I understand there's a problem with the total cost now. So. So there is a way to structure it so that you basically, like, have two assessments or something, one for the actual construction cost and one for the ITCC cost?
Yeah, there are different ways to do that. You know, but it typically results in, you know, one way to structure it would result in a lien against the property, which most property owners wouldn't want.
Right, well, maybe that was more accurate, a lien and an assessment, so that in the event that the IRS comes back, we can always go against the lien on the property for it?
The lien that we're, you're talking about right now is actually what we currently do, and they don't necessarily have to pay the second lien ITCC portion upfront, but basically, we lien the property, and those who do pay it, we take out the lien, but we have to hold the money and release it after about eight years. So, option B is what we're currently doing.
There's two ways that people, if people either pay their, let's call it, the assessment's $10,000 with $3,500 to the tax and $6,500 just construction costs. So someone who wants to just pay cash upfront, how much are they paying?
To pay the full assessment is a $6,500. They have an option of paying the $3,500 upfront, so a lien would not be placed on their property.
Okay, so if they don't pay the $3,500, then a lien is placed on their property, but they don't have to actually pay the lien or anything?
They do not have to pay it upfront.
And then after eight years, the lien's released?
Correct. I thought that they made annual payments.
No, well, that's someone who wants to pay upfront. Now, the second option is that they want to pay over 15 years or?
Right, the term, right.
And so, in the 15-year payment, are they paying ITCC?
No, we're not selling bonds for the ITCC portion until it is actually levied.
So they're not actually paying the money?
No.
No one's actually paying the money unless they really want to?
That is correct. However, there is, they do perceive it as actually part of the assessment when they're voting for it, though.
Maybe we need to do a better job of explaining it as opposed to eliminating it.
Well, I think part of the problem is maybe elderly people too, you know, say that there's a potential that this could happen, and it's 30% or 35%, and, you know, it's not a part of the, the bond issue, and that just really, you know, puts a lot of doubt in especially older people's minds as to what's going to happen, whether it is going to happen.
Counselor McCurry?
Yeah, actually, thank you. If the odds were 35%, we should continue doing what we're doing, but it sounds to me like the odds are less than 1% if I get what's being communicated to us. Is that right? So, you know, I, I would suggest that, you know, this kind of ambiguity unfortunately is characteristic of how the IRS treats municipal finance and finance in general. It's kind of like they take a, I'll know it's bad when I see it kind of attitude about it. But I'm convinced from the testimony here that this risk is minimal, and it's probably an inconvenience, particularly with the lien thing that we're putting on people's homes that we can, we can stop doing with relative confidence.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? Let's open up for public comment. If the public wants to comment on this. George, you're with the public? No?
I sound like a client.
Thank you, George. Okay, well, thank you for that report. It's not something we're going to take in action on. You know, for my part, I, you know, I agree that probability sounds pretty small, but we do actually have some pretty big assessment districts coming up. I mean, Balboa Island's going to be fairly huge, I would imagine, and, I mean, it's, oh, do we have a comment now? Well, we'll reopen for public comments.
My name is Pede Anderson. I live at 1610 West Oceanfront, and I spearheaded the 99 district, which went down. And this extra 35%, I think, had a lot to do with it. We started out in 2000 with, with about, under a $10,000 estimate, and it ended up $28,000, and obviously, 35% of that, I think, was the, was this tax. So, you know, the people of Newport Beach want to put their money in to improve their home sites and the areas where they live, and, but if you just, if you make that, the dollars too high, it's just not going to happen. So, you know, I ask that you consider removing this. We're hoping to go back out with assessment district 99 and go for a revote, but I don't know if it's gonna, how well we're gonna do if we continue with this tax. And I think if we lower it and go back to them, I think we'll have a real good chance of being able to have this pass and improve our neighborhoods, and that's what we want.
Thank you, sir. Counselor McGarner?
I think that, obviously, there's some benefit to the, to our city to have these underground assessment districts, and when they don't pass, we end up spending money anyway, not quite as much probably as the taxes, but I'd like to see this move forward, because I do think it would make a difference in moving these along.
If I could just make one last comment. We do have assessment district 92 tonight on the regular session. Engineers' report was prepared without ITCC based on the 814 study session, so I would need to know if we need to proceed with assessment district 92 ROI tonight or not, without the ITCC.
I guess we'll tell you tonight. Counselor ahead?
Yeah, this issue of, well, it doesn't really have any effect. Well, I suppose that's true. If you, if you own your home for the eight years and you get your money back, or the lien goes away, but if you have to sell your home or otherwise transfer during that period, it is an impact. It's a complicated factor, and so there is a more tangible downside issue here, and so I'm part of the group that says, let's just dispense with it.
Counselor Sowice?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that, you know, the risk is low, and there, I think there is a public benefit to the city as a whole to have these underground districts, and if eliminating it is a way to help get these things approved, then I think it's a good thing to do, so I would support eliminating it.
Okay, anyone else?
I support eliminating it until the first time they charge it, and then we'll have to put it back on.
Yeah, then we'll be paying a lot of back taxes. All right, Counselor McGarner, Counselor Dagle. All right, I think that's about it for our study session. Thank you all for coming and presenting your reports. We'll open up for public comments on non-agenda items now. Public comments on non-agenda items. Seeing no one, we are adjourned to closed session. Thank you.